No, you're right.
There we go.
Good. Okay, perfect. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start off with a roll call here. McKee here, Schultz here, Botama?
Here.
Verenkamp?
Here.
And Counselor Nichols is excused. All right, we will just get right into it, which is the Firearms Ordinance Discussion Work Session.
Okay, thanks Mayor and Council. So this is the Firearms Ordinance update. Just have a disclaimer here. This is a rough draft. So it has not been sent to the city attorney yet for any review. So there might be some modifications, obviously, tonight. Looking for some feedback. If there's something that you're looking at after this rough draft that you would like incorporated, we can work that in before we send it off to the city attorney. So a little bit of history. The last time that this was updated was the late 1990s, and I could not find it. Spending about 15 minutes in the council minutes exactly what year was updated, but I think it was 98, 99. So a couple of past incidents that really were driving us to review this ordinance. We briefly touched on them in the last, in the last time I presented this. We had a rifle round that went through a shed door, or through the side of a shed next to the service door down on Pioneer Trail. And then we also had a rifle round that went through a slaying glass door. And that person was shooting off their deck and didn't have a backstop. Our most recent incident is the fall of, last fall in 2022, where we had some shotgun pellets that fell on a customer's car in a parking lot, causing some minor damage to the car. Now, the hunters technically were legal where they were shooting. But they had a very, very small area from which they were legal, and they were legal when the officer checked. However, they just, instead of shooting in the safe direction, they chose to follow the geese over the top of them, turning to the east and shooting at the geese as they went over them, causing the pellets to come down, you know, doing some minor damage to the car. So our review process, Councilmember Schultz and Verenkamp, we've met a couple of times to discuss some of the proposed changes, get some of their feedback, look at other city ordinances. So here's some of the other city ordinances we looked at. Dayton, Medina, Rogers, Maple Grove, Minatrista, Ramsey, Lake Elmo, Farmington, and over. So we chose some cities that are similar to Corcoran, or maybe where Corcoran might be in five, 10 years, some cities that have experienced growth and what they've done to change their ordinance. These are from, their ordinances are from no shooting allowed. Like in Maple Grove, it's basically no shooting at all anymore. Certain areas allow zones, you know, firing zone or shooting zones, hunting zones. And some of them have very tight restrictions and they have a permit process. So that's kind of generally where the three areas that they fall into. So when we were looking at the ordinance, there were a couple of things that were added. I added the definition of a rifle, which is in your handout. Definition of a shotgun, definition of handgun. In our ordinance before, we had immediate family, but we had no definition for immediate family in the ordinance. We moved part of rural area, and speaking with Natalie, the city planner, we're modifying some of the language to fit Corcoran's current zoning regulations in the zoning language is what our whole goal is. Because the language that was in there was outdated. One thing I did not add in the draft is a MUSA definition, but we use it in the draft ordinance. We use the, you know, the term MUSA. So we'll add that in before it goes to the city attorney. One of them, one of the added definitions is rural areas. So it's changed to portions of the city outside of the MUSA and zoned as rural residential, or portions of the city within the MUSA zoned as urban reserve. And that came from Natalie. She said that fits with our current definition. Hunting area, designated rural areas of the city where hunting with a shotgun and/or bow and arrow is authorized.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Where would crossbows fit into the definition?
That's a, it's a good, it's a good question. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure because they would fit generally under the bows and arrows, but they do have a higher velocity than a regular. So I will check on that.
I'd follow the hunting regulations on that, the Minnesota statutes.
Minnesota statute, yeah, and I have to educate myself a little bit on the crossbows.
Yeah, because my understanding is either had to have like a medical condition to use it during bow season or had to fall in the firearms season.
Yeah, and they've, I know they've expanded it a little bit. There's a certain age now that they allow people, it used to be just a medical, a permit, but now they're allowing certain age hunters to use the crossbow because it's easier because they can't hold back the bow.
Yeah.
That's expanded a little bit. I know that.
I would follow that though, because even the velocity is not that much. They're what, 300 feet per second, maybe, or something like that?
It could be. I'm not exactly sure. Hunting area, so that's designated rural areas of the city where hunting with a shotgun, and that's what I just said. No, no shooting area. So this is one of the things we looked at, and included in your packet is a map, which we'll get to. But this would be new for the city. Designated portions of the city where discharge of a shotgun for hunting is prohibited, basically creating no shooting zones. Generally located within the MUSA, the city council may by resolution designate from time to time and modify the areas of the city as no shooting. In the ordinance, these are the areas that no changes were really considered. And one of the hard parts with this ordinance is because it's 25 years old, is it's not broken down into sections. So it's really hard to say, go to section 110 and we can make those changes really easy. It's like one long run on paragraph is really what it's like. So that would be one of the changes, you know, we'll make it, we'll get into the section so that it's easier to, easier to follow. So there's no changes to concealment, no changes to aiming, no changes to selling or furnishing a deadly weapon to a minor, minors under age 14, exceptions, lawful defense and law enforcement, hunting and shooting permission by landowner, special permits, Goose Lake, and the terms, those are the sections that there's no changes to. So a council understands is Goose Lake is on the east side of our city. We share that with Maple Grove. And there's a handful, maybe two to three permits we issue a year to hunt on Goose Lake, residents are in Corcoran.
Can I ask a question about that, Ryan?
Yep.
Does Maple Grove allow shooting Goose Lake from their side too, if I remember right?
Correct, and that's one of the reasons why we continue to keep that is because they're still allowing their limited number of properties. So we basically have the same system. They just, if you're in Corcoran, you have to come to Corcoran to get your permit. If you're in Maple Grove, you have to get.
Got it. I think I read that. I just, I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
So here are some of the changes. In special permit section, remove the discharge of a high-powered firearm under certain conditions and for permits to be required. We struck the whole area of conditions. It used to say firearms deer hunting, just changed that to hunting. Added three sections under hunting, following the Minnesota law, establishing zones and rural areas and added the 500-foot rule. Also added five permitted discharges, so that it's more clear for residents and non-residents or people who want to hunt what's permitted. Real simple, real simple to identify what's permitted, and then prohibited discharge is what's prohibited. So hopefully clearing some of that up for people so you don't have to read through a few pages. Yep.
It's, I don't, I don't know, it's a little hard to follow, at least from my packet.
Yep.
I don't, what is the five?
So at the, it would, I do have, I can show you, I do have the slide with.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Oh, so we're going to talk about.
Yep, yep, yep. I did, I did put it in the PowerPoint because it'd be easier to follow, I think. It's a, it's a run-on.
I'm jumping the gun.
That's okay. So when we sat down and discussed generally what areas in Corcoran would be no shooting, no hunting, you know, what areas would we identify currently as we move forward? And taking the zoning map and just, you know, taking a few minutes to draw some boxes, obviously, we would do something that's a little bit easier to understand than this. Anything, anything outlined in blue would, at this point, what we discussed would be no hunting, no shooting. So, you know, down in the south, let's see if this works, southwest area, you have Ravinia, Tavera, just to the west. We have the City Hall property, right, kind of right there under what's purple. There's the long sliver, that's the City Hall property, Long 116. And then to the, to the right of that sliver is the Shutey property, and below that's Dorothy's property. Those would be open currently under, under what we're proposing. And if at some point those came in for land use, that's when it's approved by the city, that's when we would update the map and add those to the no hunting, no shooting area.
So it'd be allowed there, but 500 feet?
Correct, yes. You'd have to be 500, and you'd have to be 500 feet from, you have to get written permission from your neighbor if you're within 500 feet of their house.
Gotcha.
State law.
Yep, that's, yep.
Makes sense.
Yep.
If we refine this map where it says Dorothy's name there, those residential properties that you come in from 101, I'd exclude those too.
Oh, okay. Well, those, right next to Dorothy, that's Goose Lake right there.
Yeah, but there's, I know, I see Goose Lake, but there's.
Oh, I see, the ones that are not on Goose Lake, yeah, 81st Place. Yes, 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 yes. And we certainly could do that. Yes, I would agree. Yep, yep, yep. And that's when the program I was using wasn't quite precise enough to go in. And so I spoke with Mike Pritchard, and he said, I can help you with that once we, once we exactly know what we're going to do.
You're talking to ones back where we paved.
Yeah, so it'd be 81st. Yeah, yeah, there's 12 or 15 properties, yeah, correct, that are not on Goose Lake. Right, right, yep. And I'm sorry, and then just to the west, you can see Corcoran Trail and the city park. So that includes the city park and oh, the new development off of County Road 10, just across from the city park, Rush Creek Reserve. So generally where that, that line ends would be straight across from City Hall. The property straight across from us to the north is, would be wide open for hunting. And then basically from Shutey Road all the way north to the city border, because we have the Bellwether Development and Amberly and, you know, other proposals, other proposed developments that are, you know, in the pipeline. To the west, we have a rectangle there meets County Road 30, which is Hope Community Church, where the water tower is going to be. And there's some plans here in the future that something might come through there. So that would, that would exclude those areas. That's really the no shooting area that's currently proposed at this time. So I'm going to add the 81st properties to the list. Any other questions on with that? Okay. I just put that blank. So here's, here is the ordinance, is it sits in front of where, how it currently is in code. The red areas are added, and you can see where we, where I struck out language. It's a little bit easier to follow up here, maybe, than it is in your packet. So adding the definition for a rifle, adding the definition for shotgun, adding the definition for handgun.
Can you I'm just going to ask that maybe the word deadly weapon?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if we need to have inflammatory language around weapons.
Okay.
We'll just say weapon.
Fire, just a firearm.
Just fire.
Strike?
Just take.
Cling to say.
Okay.
I think the term deadly weapon was used because that's a statutory term. So Minnesota state statute includes charges as it relates to deadly weapon, and I can.
And that would be a good question for the city attorney, just to make sure, you know, that if we need that in there. If we don't, and he says, yeah, I think you're covered under the state statute, it doesn't need to be in your city ordinance, that's something we'll have him review.
What's the A's after firearms? What's that? I don't, I don't follow why they have the subpoints underneath firearms, how they're singled out.
And that's, right, and that's why we, I chose to go with the actual definition of what a shotgun is in red and what a handgun is.
Oh.
That, that's, the stuff in, in black is the way the ordinance is currently, right?
So it'd be striking.
Striking most of that and replacing with the language in.
With the actual definition.
The actual definitions, right.
Okay.
Yep. And that's, once again, you know, like, like, well, I think when I copied this over from the ordinance, it got all, instead of doing A, B, C, D, E. But that's another question for the city attorney is, do we need to have any similar type of instrument, you know, that's kind of that cover-all language? Do we need to have that in this ordinance? And he may say, yes, I think you do, or no, the definitions would work really well. Any other questions? We'll move to the next, kind of the next page here. So let me talk about high-powered firearm. There's a definition for immediate family, which we did not have before, which we talk about in the ordinance. All persons related to the homeowner includes your children, siblings, grandchildren, and their respective spouses. The rural areas is new language, and there's a slight tweak to that actual language for rural areas. That was my best guess at rural areas. Natalie said, let's change it a little bit. So she gave me some updated language, which I wasn't, it's in the first part of the PowerPoint, but it just tweaks the language a little bit. I think clarifies what a rural area is in Corcoran. Hunting area, portion of the city generally outside the MUSA line or zoned rural residential.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
On the high, how, the definition of high-powered firearm, would a 22 be, because it's, would a 22 be considered a high-powered?
Correct, it would.
So then are all rifles high-powered in this?
So in, in the ordinance, later on in the ordinance, there is an exception for to use a high-powered rifle up to a 22 if you're having a problem with an animal or you need, you know, like livestock, chasing livestock or something like that. So that's currently in the ordinance. Yep, the black part is, that is the current ordinance, yes.
So the high-powered firearm is exactly the same as a rifle?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Fair enough.
Yep. Hunting area, we kind of talked about the little bit with the map. So that's a portion of the city generally outside of the MUSA line or zoned rural residential. And she gave me another sentence that would, I think, help clarify that a little bit more. And then the no shooting area, basically generally inside the MUSA line, and then the city council would, would update that, whether it's yearly or, as, as that, as growth and development moves, that area would change and might expand a little bit.
Is there anything inside the MUSA that's not zoned rural residential?
Inside of the MUSA?
That's not in one of these blue boxes?
I, let me go back.
Anything inside the MUSA that's not zoned rural residential but not included in these blue boxes? So you might have to talk to Natalie about that.
Right, and that's one of the things that she explained. She said, let's use this definition because it, it helps clarify it a little bit, right? That, because you can see kind of stuff over by Corps Control East and West. That's inside the MUSA, but it might be zoned rural residential. Yeah, so she gave a little better definition.
But I mean, I guess there's a comfort level though, because you can still apply for a permit if you're in a blue area. It has to come before council, right? That's what we did for a carve-out.
We can do, we can look at that. Currently, that's not, that's currently not there. So this would be, there would be no, there would be no hunting or no shooting in those blue areas.
Yeah, because I thought we talked about something to do with that effect, because when you look at, there's some large spots of property in there, like Denny Stieg's property, right?
Mm-hmm.
If he doesn't develop that, I know he deer hunts on it, so.
There's plenty of space up there.
There's plenty of space up there. There's probably a few areas like that where.
And, and that is something I think to look at with how we have, how we have the boundaries. If, if we are looking at excluding something like that, I think that's, we can look at that definitely.
Yeah, I think.
Because we're, we're really trying to steer away from the permit process and not have folks coming in to get permits. What typically happens is I want to shoot right, I want to go shooting right now. I want to go, I want to go deer hunting right away, and I need my permit, right? And we're like, whoa, 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 wait, it's Friday at 4:30. We're walking out the door. Right, that's a lot of times what happens.
Right. And you could, you could get around some of that too with saying, you, you know, your permit's not valid until, just like a deer license, right? You can't buy a deer license the day of you want to hunt. If you buy it before shooting hours, and you could impose the same thing. Permits are only issued during normal business hours of City Hall, and they're not effective until 24 hours after issuance or something goofy. But if we don't have a carve-out like that, then you, then somebody like Denny would say, and I'm not speaking for Denny, I haven't talked to him about it, but he would say, well, why is Shetty property excluded and mine's not? You know, we could run into situations like that.
Sure, and generally, after reading the ordinances, and I would use the term, most of them have, the carve-out is a minimum acreage, and I wouldn't say, we'd just use 10 or 15 or 20.
Yeah.
The ones I was reading, you had to have a minimum acreage and still be with more than the 500 feet. So that's something we can, we can definitely look at.
Okay.
We run into problems as well with people that get permitted, believe that the other rules don't apply necessarily as well, that I have a range permit, I can, you know, and we end up out there with some, some sort of disorderly behavior, whether it's noise or other disturbances. And a lot of times people believe because they have a permit, they're exempt from a lot of stuff. So we'd have to be really clear if we're going to invest the time and money in a permit process, or do we refine the mapping? And I think our goal, our hope was to try and refine having accurate maps and have, not have us blessing certain ranges and not other ones.
Yeah, I was thinking more of just the hunting aspect, not, not a range aspect.
And I would say our complaints, hunting complaints are very few, honestly. It's, those aren't the ones that we respond to or we get called about. It's generally somebody going out and shooting because they think they're quote-unquote in the country, right? Those are the ones that we get the calls on because they fire off multiple rounds and they're shooting, use your rifles. Generally hunting, unless they're trespassing, you know, which is pretty rare, actually. We don't, we don't get many calls on actual hunters.
Yeah, but the blue boxes apply to hunting as well, right?
Correct, yes, yes, it would, yeah, yeah, right, yes, yep.
Yeah, so I'd say if we're not going to do a permit carve-out, we'd want to really refine the map. Like, we'd have to go through it, maybe at a work session or something to.
Yeah, I think, I think we have to have some type of carve-out or else you, it'd almost be better if you, for hunting, then you carve out, but then not have these carve-out boxes in here. And then even the Shettys would come back to us and say, hey, I'm on 240 acres or whatever.
They're currently excluded, and so Dorothy, I mean, obviously, this is not refined, you know.
Yeah, no, no. But I can, I can see where this would cause an issue with somebody that has a bunch of land that's used to hunting on it. All of a sudden, now we impose it, and how did I end up in a blue box?
Sure. All right, let me go back to where we were. I think we were down here, no shooting area. So after the no shooting area, everything in black is currently in the city ordinance. Talks about concealment and discharge, aiming prohibited, minors under the age of 14. So there was no changes to any of those sections.
What, so if, so like, we could always hunt it. The hunting age is 12, right?
Correct, yeah. This, yep, and this is providing a firearm illegally. This is not saying, oh, here, son, daughter, let's go, let's go out and walk, let's go walk our field to see if there's some pheasants there. That's different.
But what if, oh, but if, if you're, my kids are all older than this, so this isn't a question for me. But if your kid is 13 and they go sit in their deer stand in the morning, would this law prohibit them from doing that?
No.
Okay. But what if there's, oh, under the immediate charge?
Right, so.
But what does that mean?
Typically, a parent would be in, not in control, but they're with, not necessarily with them, but they might be 100 feet away in their own deer stand. So we, we haven't ever had any issues with that. And I would, I would say that they're under the control of that parent or guardian. They don't necessarily have to be sitting a foot away from them to be under their control.
Yeah, but I think in John's example, and like you said, this doesn't apply to him, but if his kid walked out in the morning, he's sitting there eating breakfast at the kitchen table, and the kid's out in the back 40 with his deer rifle or slug gun. You know, that's not exempt from this, the way it reads. And he's legal by state statute.
Legal by state statute, yes. I believe that wasn't the original intent of the way it was written. I didn't write the ordinance, but I don't believe that that was the original intent.
And this is what's currently.
This is what's currently, currently in the ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I think we want to change it somewhat so it doesn't impose, it doesn't impose restrictions that are beyond state statute. We're just limiting area and not imposing.
If the state says a 12-year-old can hunt, why does Corcoran say a 14-year-old can hunt?
And then exceptions down at the bottom, that, there's no change to that. And we'll move on to the next page. The, the black area at the top, hunting and shooting permission of landowner, basically talks about having the 500 feet, or 500 feet with a corral containing livestock without written permission. We have had a few incidences where people are shooting off their deck and the neighbor doesn't like it. And you, when you explain to the, to the person shooting, well, you're, you're, oh, there's no way, there's no way I'm 250 or 300 feet from this house. When you pull it up on GIS and you draw the line, you're like, yeah, you're 276 feet. Oh, that's, they don't, people just don't understand that, right? They think they have plenty of room. 500 feet is farther than you think it is when you, when you, when you're next to a house there. Goose Lake, or we're talking about special permits. So one of the areas we, we removed is allowing the discharge of a high-powered firearm under certain conditions and permits required in this division. The chief touched on it briefly because what, what we're finding is we're having people, rifles were excluded in Corcoran, but then we're giving a special permit to certain, some people to allow them to discharge a rifle in Corcoran. So we are, we are kind of going against our own ordinance and saying, well, you can shoot a rifle in Corcoran.
How, how often do you come into play where you have somebody hunting on somebody's land that has verbal permission but not written permission?
Most of the time they do. That's what, that they have just the verbal permission. The only ones that I know that we have the written permission are Goose Lake because they come in to get their permits, and they know they have to have their, their, their written permission, right?
And how much particular, I mean, if someone's got verbal permission from the landowner, you verify it with the landowner.
Right.
You're not going to.
It's, it's usually more of a trespass issue where they don't want that, they don't want the person there at all, right? And then it's usually, that's usually, then we usually go right, it's usually a trespassing issue and not just a written permission issue.
People lie about that, though, so.
Oh, yeah, I mean, people lie about everything, right?
I get it, but that, but like in, in certain situations.
But that's not a state statute either. You have to have written permission to hunt on somebody's land.
Yeah, you're, you're right.
No, it's not. It's, it's very common from the ordinances, is having the written permission. I think it's just, it's an extra step that cities put in place to help keep trespassers, potentially keep trespassers off somebody else's property. But you're right, it's not very common. I mean, like, there's a couple other places, folks that, that have been around, they, they will get the written permission just because they're ethical and they know that that's, the landowner wants that or likes that, so they'll do that.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we have had some goose hunters just to the north of City Hall, and they had written permission to be out there for the entire season, and they had it from the landowner. The landowner revoked that when the land, or when the person passed away, and then nobody's allowed there anymore.
But I mean, they, they don't need a form or anything, right? They could just pull out a piece of scratch paper and say, I so-and-so gave written.
Yep, written permission, yep, yes, exactly right. Yep, yeah.
Doterized with three.
Right. The, the conditions was, was struck from this, from this draft. And then the terms, basically saying, you know, really the terms applies to our Goose Lake permits. They're ba- they're basically up at March first following year now, obviously goose hunting and duck hunting is over long before that. Changed, uh, that shit, where it's hunting in red, that did say deer hunting, we changed it to hunting. And then the black part is all the same. Basically, uh, deer hunting, you have to be no less than six feet, have your firearm case to and from the stand, um, and be in an elevated tree stand.
So, can I ask? Can I talk about that one?
Yep.
Um, they've rolled back casings even in vehicles. Like, you actually don't have to have your gun cased anymore in a vehicle.
Depends on the size of the city.
Correct.
Does it?
Yes, it does, yep.
But, um, I a hundred percent will never case my gun on the way to my deer stand. But I don't know of anyone that actually ever does that and it's, it's an odd...
Case your gun on the way to the deer stand?
No.
When you're walking?
Yeah, I always have my gun, it's unloaded, but not cased.
From, the person who wrote the ordinance, I, if I understand his intent correctly, was to stop the people that, if it wasn't in a case, from taking that shot while they were still on the ground. Because they wanted to get them in an elevated tree stand so that they were, you know, pointing their slugs down. And I believe the original intent was if they were, if the gun was in a case, it's not the, oh, I'm going to take a shot while I'm on.
Sure.
That, that, I believe that was the original intent of the...
It could, I mean, you could go as far as to say unloaded and that would have, have the same thing.
Yeah, I've never held my case to a deer stand and I always carried a bullet.
But then, um, just something to think about, sometimes, when you shoot a deer from your deer stand, you don't mortally wound it immediately and you have to get down and then you have a, yeah, you have a deer that's, like, needs to be killed. But that, it's not addressed in here. Cause you can't, it's not like you're, you're going to go elevated stand, elevated stand. It seems like common sense, but usually laws don't have, they're kind, they're written to be black and white, but is, can we add some language in here that if, uh, a wounded deer needs to be dispatched, it can be dispatched from the ground?
Yeah, I will ask the city attorney, I don't, makes sense.
Yeah. Some people, like my kids shoot deer and they go dead, they're dead immediately and then their dad sometimes needs
Just by that much?
And let's see, where we're hunting, uh, number one, hunting, the shotgun and bow and arrow. So we talk about Minnesota's Department of Natural Resources state laws pertaining trespassing, giving you the authorization to establish the areas. No other firearms, including long guns, handguns or weapons, except bows and arrows might be permitted in that area for hunting. The city council by resolution establishes the map, uh, which in the area for discharge of shotguns and the use of bow and arrows are allowed for hunting. No other, hunting shall be allowed in other areas of the city. Number three, hunting in certain rural areas, the city poses greater, greater safety concerns due to their proximity of other developed areas, more inten- that are more intensely developed. So those areas will change over time as the city and adjacent communities continue to develop. The city council made by resolution designate and modify those areas to no hunting. And that really comes in as, this area is, might be hunting, but all of a sudden it's, there's, um, you know, big development or, or something, you know, commercial area or something that abuts that area. Maybe we, we might want to move over, that gives you the authorize or the ability to say, ah, this property here is only eight acres, but it's really close to where we have these businesses that are, that have just come in or these, uh, commercial developments and we really probably should limit their ability to do that. Number four, hunting may be conducted from a fixed location identified by a property owner, five hundred feet from a residence located on another property. Yeah, that doesn't, let's see if we can move that over real quick. Discharge of a high-powered firearm, talks about that. And here's where, um, council member bottom, it talks about, uh, you may up to a twenty-two for the purpose of protecting your livestock from an unprotected predator, so you may use a twenty-two, um, to do that. Raccoons win open season. So here's where it's a little more clear, the permitted discharges. Written permission by the property owner shall be given to any person prior to the discharge of a firearm or bow on their property. Recreational target shooting is conducted. Projectile shall be directed at a target with a backstop of sufficient size, strength and density to stop and control the projectile.
Can, can I make a request?
Yes.
Like, that you have giant forty-eight font lettering behind that that says trees are not sufficient backstops?
Trees are not sufficient, but, correct, that's correct.
Can we add it?
Probably stay.
Not, not joking, but like...
An earth backstop of some kind?
Well, I just, I just, I don't know, I, I get frustrated a lot by people. I just happen to have, my, my land is lined with woods. And I get really, really frustrated and tired of people target shooting in their backyard and using the woods that I might be in as the backstop. If you did a percentage, percentage of opaqueness or percentage of air that a bullet could go through in a woods, it's like seventy percent. It's, so it'll only stop like bullets in thirty percent of its, if, if it's area, but if it's got leaves and stuff, sometimes it's light can't penetrate.
Is there a better way to define backstop?
It's my biggest, like, I busted four neighbors shooting
Into it.
rifles and
Yikes.
in, into the, my property.
Gotcha, yeah, that would be concerning.
Yeah. And I, I don't know what you'd, I don't know, it's really, really frustrating being on city council and and be, like, I, I'm obviously a hunter myself, I'm an advocate for the second amendment and being able to use firearms. But, um, but I also am like concerned for my own safety when people think that we, everyone in Corcoran has four hundred acres and we can just shoot guns everywhere and
Balance.
And then also like, whatever happens to this, um, law or whatever, unsafe practices have to be ticketed and...
Yeah, there's no, you know, I agree with that and I think I said that too, Ryan. We don't use teaching moments for improper use and those kind of things, I absolutely agree with that too.
I pulled, and this is, I don't have a lot of beefs with our police department. The one big beef I've had is that there have been lots of reports of, of people shooting centerfire rifle rounds with no backstop and we've never issued a ticket, ticket for that. And so, and I don't know if we have, I, actually I, I, we pulled it out, Matt, Matt and I worked together on it. And so we need to, if we're making these changes, we have to enforce it like crazy because someone's going to die. And then there'll be no hunting, no nothing.
Right.
And I don't like when people say like hyper, hyperbolic statements, but like, there's a lot of
That, no, that's what would happen.
Close calls and it's cra- it's really stupid.
Is, so is there maybe some language that we want to add about, like, trying to distinguish what qualifies as a?
I don't know, somehow, I, I don't, I don't know. I think that sufficient str- that is the thing. But I almost want, I want to add, because so many people think that trees are a good backstop. I want to add that for emphasis. And I usually am
We'll see if maybe send that to the city attorney, see if there's a way to words that into there.
Yep. And, and the one, I think that's another question for the city attorney is, here's what we're, here's what we're using as, uh, draft language. Is there something else that you've used in other cities that would strengthen that and help, right?
And I would say that I think one thing that we could do to educate when we do get this, uh, this new ordinance or the ordinance updated is sending out, putting in the newsletter and outlining those specific things.
Yeah.
Backstop is, trees are not a backstop, so.
Yeah.
And maybe a page on the city website and stuff like that, just.
We actually wouldn't need any of these laws if people had sufficient backstops. Like, you could shoot in your own property if you had an acre, if you had a giant, I mean, I'm not suggesting anybody does this, but the, the only thing that, uh, firearms become bad is when they leave your property. So if there was a way to sufficiently insulate, um, and noise and whatever, I don't care about that. That, some people do, so we got to respect that, but...
And the, and the next, the next part of the draft is, you know, when they're discharging a firearm or projectile, does carry beyond the property line. So that, that's basically the next sentence that was added in, you know, that kind of helps strengthen that a little bit.
Yeah.
Cause, you know, you can say, oh, we, we, let's put the IDS behind there for a backstop, you know, I mean, that, that, I agree with you, the, you know, how much more do we put in there to, to paint the picture of what a good backstop is?
Yeah. And good, but good luck finding a, a, you know, a rifle round.
Right, right.
So like, how do you prove that?
Well, and I think as much as we can shift the burden onto the person shooting for the responsibility of that, rather than us having to prove that a backstop was insufficient for a charge, it would be better that if the responsibility is on the shooter to, and I don't know, that would be language that the city attorney might be able to help with, but putting that responsibility on the shooter to prove that their backstop is sufficient for what they're shooting, how they're shooting, where they're shooting, instead of trying to have, make us have to prove that case.
Um, the next bullet point, a landowner ma- a member of a landowner's immediate family may use a high-powered firearm or high-powered firearm up to the twenty-two for the purpose of protecting livestock. So that's in there, so it gives that availability for folks in need to protect their livestock. Another addition, after reading the ordinance, I guess I didn't realize and I added it in there because we do have our firearm safety class and we do have our range for law enforcement. We didn't have an exemption permit, or we weren't permitted technically to, uh, shoot the twenty-twos and shoot our rifles in the city. So that's an addition, so Minnesota, Minnesota firearm safety certification class and law enforcement may discharge a high-powered firearm for the purpose of certification and training.
I thought it had a rimfire provision in it, that hype, that you could shoot written rimfire twenty-two.
But it, the, the current ordinance is up, you know, uses the, um, uh, protecting a, or protecting livestock, so does the certification class really count? Hmm, kind of not, so we just cleared it up.
Oh, really? Okay.
I mean, that, that, that's a little bit more clear, that, that, yes, it's okay to, to have the firearm safety class and they're shooting twenty-twos, you know, for their certification. Prohibited discharges, no person shall, shall discharge a firearm within five hundred feet of any residence or a bow within a hundred and fifty feet unless you have the written permission from the property owner. No person shall discharge a firearm or bow on public property owned or operated by the city, county, state or the school district. And the discharge of a rifle or handgun shall not be allowed within the city. And that...
What was the thing about three and five that I asked about?
Three and five? Oh, I can go back and let's see here. Uh, let's see here, three and five. I'm missing it.
No, it's in there.
Next one maybe?
I think it's three forward.
Jesus. Oh, oh, with the, the, yes, you, uh, the three and five was, we added the five permitted discharges and added the three prohibited discharges. That's at the end, we'll go, I can hit, hit those again quick. Oops.
Oh, okay.
Those, those are new and I, like I said, when I copied it over, it all went from one, two, three, four, five down to ones. So those are, and the prohibited discharge, those are new, those are three new prohibited discharges. And that makes it more clear when somebody reads our ordinance, instead of trying to go through paragraph after paragraph of, this spells it right out, what's prohibited, what's allowed.
Well, what's that bottom one, the discharge of a rifle or handgun or it's not be allowed within the city?
Does that even have, even if they have a backstop?
We currently, we currently do not allow rifles to be discharged in the city, but when you read the ordinance, it's very difficult to discern. It's not, I go back to the definition at the top.
So, so under this new ordinance, you will not be able to shoot a rifle in the city?
You currently can't shoot a rifle in the city unless you, unless you have, unless you're, unless you get a special permit, which is one of the, one of the provisions we are moving from the...
So what if you have a sufficient backstop enough for a rifle?
So currently, currently, there is, um, you have to get, go through the process to get a permit.
Yeah, but the city stopped issuing permits like three years ago.
Correct, to address and look at the ordinance.
Yes.
Yes.
What if you have a sufficient backstop for rifles? Are you flat out not going to be able to shoot them?
Correct, yes, under this current, the new ordinance, yes.
What can you shoot at a backstop under the, under this draft?
Shotguns.
That's it?
Mm-hmm. After, after reviewing all of the, all of the, um, draft or other cities' ordinances, there's no other city that allows rifle fire.
Really?
Most people don't shoot shotguns at a backstop though. So it's effectively, you're not, you're saying no shooting then?
No, you still be, you still be able to use a shotgun.
At a backstop?
Or
For target shooting?
For target shooting, yes, yep. Cause, I mean, under, under the current ordinance, right, there is no, no rifle fire allowed in, in Corcoran.
So...
Except for the one-offs, like he's saying that are illegally shooting, you know, that, those people.
Yeah, or, but I had a permit, so I was in.
No, I, I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the, the, the neighbors that were, you know, shooting with improper backstop, right?
Okay, so under this current, under the current draft, even if you had, even if you had beautiful backstop, you can only shoot a shotgun round at it?
Correct, yes.
And I would say that part of that is based on the rounds through structure that we had came from backstop.
One of them came from a, it was a range, um, and there were some unauthorized people there that were shooting when the, when the people, when the folks who owned the range weren't there. But we were unable to determine exactly when that happened, uh, because the person didn't find the bullets in the shed until maybe a week later, we're guessing, so.
But no pistols, no?
Just shotgun.
I mean, I did, I've got a neighbor that makes an event every Saturday and they go from ten AM until four, five PM and they invite number of other people over to non-relatives to discharge and target shoot. And they're on ten, twelve acres. None of that would be...
So they're discharging handguns or rifles, rifles, okay, all, all the above, right?
Yes.
Great, so technically under the, under the current ordinance, that technically is not allowed under the current ordinance. And that, that would stay under the current, under the, the draft ordinance also.
Okay.
What, what about somebody that's, has a hand pigeon, or a pigeon thrower and they're on, on their land?
That's fine, yep, they can do that.
Don't they need a backstop?
Well, shotgun, shotguns, and so in the, um, let's see here.
I'm, I'm shooting live ones just because they're nuisance in my barn.
No, I'm not going to get into that part, but I'm more about
Full disclosure.
Yeah, it's...
You don't have to incriminate yourself in any way, shape or form, but...
I, I do it, so.
So, uh, permitted discharges, recreational target shooting is conducted. So, uh, shall be directed at a target with a backstop of sufficient size, strength and density to stop the projectile. Well, a shotgun pellet effective range is
But there's no backstop.
Eighty yards, so it's different than, um, anything else.
Only backstop that I've ever Only backstop that I've ever seen around, close around is Crow River, if you've ever been in Crow River.
No, I haven't.
Yeah.
They've got a wall up to protect shot, and a lot, a lot of big clubs will have a wall, but it's.
No one's gonna have that on their own property.
I think it's probably cause people barked about throwing lead into the river there.
Well, that was it, most, most big, big facilities have shot curtains to reclaim the shot.
Yeah, oh, okay, yeah.
But if you're, if you need a backstop to shoot clay targets on your property, that's where I'm confused with this, cause if we need a backstop language, but we're only allowing people to shoot shotguns, why do we need a backstop then?
Which is, so with the ordinance, the hope is, the hope is to clear it up, because it says all of this in the, in the current ordinance, but it's very hard to find it in the current ordinance. So the hope is to be able to put this language so it's very easy to read it and understand it, um, cause a lot of people are not following the current, current ordinance in Corcoran.
So the backstop might relate specifically to slug, but if there was something in the, in the, under that same backstop part of it that addressed maybe birdshot or, you know, an effective range or clear area behind that for, for those as a permitted use, you know, cause I, yeah, I think that you're not gonna have a backstop in the sky.
No.
There are, but there's obviously quite a bit shorter range than, for instance, a rifle.
A rifle or a 22 round that's up to a mile and a half, is, you know.
Yeah. So.
I think that maybe that section.
Uses on.
I have, I have an issue.
And that's one of the reasons why it needs some updating, right? So this, this language has come from other cities, and some of them are very close, either Medina or Minatrista, so this is, a lot of it's the current language that cities around us are using.
I think that section two probably just, we can probably wordsmith, cause there are other, the other conversation earlier was on the backstop as well, that what is a sufficient backstop, and then how does that apply to, for instance, clays or, or, you know, shotgun? So I think maybe some wordsmithing on that number two under permitted discharges to try and bring all of those together and see if maybe the city attorney has some ideas on that, too.
Do any of the cities that you looked at allow target shooting of handguns?
They don't, if I remember correctly, they don't specifically say that. For example, Minatrista has three different zones, which is, you know, they have no zone, a bow only zone, and then they have a bow shotgun zone. Medina doesn't allow it, they have, they use a different term of a wildlife protected areas, I can't remember the exact term off the top of my head, but they.
But are those more geared towards hunting or actually just discharge of firearms?
Both, they're both, so in Minatrista, for example, it's no discharge in that area at all, and then the hunting areas, you know, shotgun only, that's all you can shoot in there, it'd be shotgun. The other only, is only shotgun and bow.
Okay.
So if they're excluding, or handguns are usually part of the prohibited along with rifles.
Okay.
Yep. Because of the, the distance that a handgun can travel, right? It's farther than, it's farther than a shotgun, or the shotgun with eighty, eighty, a hundred yards, you know, roughly, yep.
So I, I, I have a half a mile backstop, I have a range that was permitted, you stand up here, shoot down, my targets are downward projecting, and, and so like, so if, so if you shoot from here and it's, it's not, it's not very far, it's like from here, it doesn't even go to the end of the parking lot, this way, so it's like this, but, but if for some reason you actually shot like that, you, it would be, you would have to travel like three quarters of a mile before you, before you hit a house, you'd have to intentionally, like shoot, but, but where I'm from, in Isanty County, it's not that different from here, and, like at some point, there should, I feel like, and I think, like, I'm, I'm actually safer shooting on my rifle range, cause it's specifically trajectory down, trajectory is down, than when I shoot clay pigeons, the trajectory is up. And I would, I would bet a lot of money that a rifle round, round at my house has never traveled as far as the rounds I shoot clay pigeons. So I'm torn, because I have a super unusual situation where I, I can do all this stuff, and it's like, and I, and I was permitted, you're penalizing people who have done things the right way because we never enforced our ordinance.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to see maybe a bigger look at other cities, just to verify that they're really, like, we'd really be the outlier if we could find a way to allow that in certain circumstances. It's kinda surprising to me that no other city is allowing that rifle or handgun in, with a, with a sufficient backstop and everything in any circumstance.
If you look at Dayton, it's, I don't think you can find, even in Oak Grove, you gotta go pretty far north to find some of the lot sizes that we have here in Corcoran. Like, I don't, I, I don't.
We understand more like greenfields ordinances.
Yeah, cause the, the east, east, the eastern side of Corcoran is not differentiable from Maple Grove to a certain extent, density. We're looking at density, but the western side of Corcoran has like the same density as.
Greenfield.
Greenfield. And Medina, and St. Michael, and Albertville, like, it's not.
Right.
I would like to be able to actually have a permitting process, that if you, if you have a substantial, uh, permit, you know, if you have a substantial backdrop that you should, you should be allowed.
Permit? Yeah, I like that.
Then we have to look at standards and inspections.
No, I'm good.
I don't know, yeah, yeah.
Would that be something, uh, would you wanna tie acreage to something like some of the language you were talking about, like, or?
I thought that's actually what, I thought that's what the subcommittee was gonna be looking at, um, it, but, um, I would.
I'm writing, I'm writing some notes so that, you know, I can do some more research on some of that.
No, I know, I, I don't, when you came out to my house to inspect my property, at first you said it wasn't good enough, and then I had to raise one end, and then I, so to make sure that we shot downward, uh, rather than, than up, and, so the, the concept is that the target at which you're shooting is the land, the earth, whatever's behind it is the earth. So, i- in theory, if, if, you know, a thirty out six round can travel a mile and a half, in theory, in no place, in, there aren't that many places in Minnesota you can just shoot a mile and a half and have zero chance of shooting something. So in theory, if you use that as your, um, like, there weren't that many, be that many people could actually shoot.
Using that for the size?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it, so, um, I feel like if you do, I, I think if you do the right things, you still ought to be able to shoot a center fire, center fire rifle in, in Corcoran.
I'd like to see if we could find a way to do that.
Or at least a rimfire rifle.
Yeah.
I think you're, you know, when you talk about your scenario, you have a pretty unique situ, or unique, uniquely situated property to be able to do that, when you talk about, you know, the effective range of a rifle being a quarter of the width of the city, there are very few people that have that land when you look at the, you know, the effective range of a rifle, which is why, you know, that's why the state of Minnesota limits your, most of your rifle hunting to north of, was it mostly up by ninety-four, north of, you know, as you're going north of that, but.
Twenty-three.
It's, it's hard to find a situation where you have, you know, your situation where you're talking about an elevated, a, a long enough distance and the right elevations, cause I think a lot of people fail to realize how far a mile and a half is, especially when you consider you have a six by six mile city, it's, it's pretty hard to, there might be, what, one or two people that might be able to, to get there.
Or my, yeah, I get it, I'm just, my, I guess, um, obviously my neighbors didn't think about a mile and a half, they thought of, they could just shoot a target in their yard and all the leaves would stop thirty out six rounds from going. So anyways, uh, could you get a CUP process or a PUD process to add that ability onto your own property?
Add a backstop?
Certified range or?
One, one time we talked about minimum acreage in one of our meetings.
Todd, sorry, one.
Yeah, we talked minimum acreage.
Yeah, we talked minimum acreage in one of our meetings.
We did, yes, we did, yeah.
We talked ten acres, I thought.
I'd have to go back and look at my notes, that sounds.
As long as, as long as you shot on your property, and stayed on your property, not shoot into somebody else's.
Right, which does fall under one of the, uh.
Yeah.
Oh, for, but is that a center fire rifle?
I don't know what we defined it as then.
I don't think we even talked about what it was.
At one point, I think we talked about rifles.
Right, and we did talk, we did talk about outside of that, generally that blue, you know, that blue area that was.
Yeah, I think there was some examples you talked about. But I think if you go down the backstop route and you wanna open it up, even let's say you even open it up to just handguns, you'd have to go down some type of backstop that met.
Certain standard.
A high bar of a minimum standard. You know what I mean? And it might, you almost wanna make it so that's, it would be so imposing that the majority of people wouldn't meet that bar.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
I don't know that, I don't know, honestly, changing this would change a whole lot of attitudes in the city, just gives us more leverage.
Right.
It, correct, and it also, you know, one of the goals is to make it a little easier to read and comprehend, so that people can look at it and go, oh, I can do this, I can do this, I can't do this, I can't do that. Cause right now, when you look at it, it's, you mean, even the officers sometimes argue about, well, it says you can, no, it doesn't quite say that, it says this, so they're going back and forth sometimes.
Yeah.
So it hopefully locks some of that, some of those definitions in, you know, we can certainly look at the handgun outside of that area, you know, generally outside the news, so we can look at that, something to look.
Cause a handgun is permit, a permitted firearm for deer hunting in a shotgun zone.
Yes, correct, yeah, I'm sorry, writing some notes.
And my guess is most of, most of the people are, that's what they're probably shooting when they're shooting within the city is probably target shooting with pistols, is my guess.
Yeah, well.
You do get the ones.
We do have all three, we have people that have a, they're on the, the high school trap team.
Trap team, trap shooting.
We, we do have people that have some, that, you know, bring friends and family out for, to shoot, because they're, you know, out in the country, and then we have the, the people who are completely illegal, who like, council member bottom I was speaking about, who just, oh, I'm just gonna shoot some rifle rounds off because I'm in the country, I don't have proper backstops, so.
My, my neighbor had, um, there is a guy, I, I'll, so far I have a hundred percent accuracy is determining whether it's a shotgun, a center fire rifle, or a rimfire rifle. I called on my neighbor, or I went over, I've called on my neighbors a bunch, a few times, cause I, cause I, it's dangerous.
Yeah.
But I walked over there and a guy was, a guy was shooting a target up from where his position, and it was deer opener, and he's out in my, on my neighbor's property shooting a target, like, in a tree with his, with his shotgun, with center fire, I was a, he's shooting a forty-four. I'm like, what are you doing? He's like, um, I'm tar, I'm target shooting, I'm like, you, you can't do that here. He said, I got permission from the name, the guy, the, who, I'm like, that's not enough, you can't shoot a center fire handgun in Corcoran without permitting for it, and my daughter is right there in a, my daughter's in a deer stand behind you and you're shooting. I was so pissed and I could've killed her.
Understandably.
But that's kind of the crap that happens, so like.
I think it comes down to the backstop issue, if we can find a way to define what that high level of backstop is and have a permitting process around that.
I think where I shot when I was a kid, oh, Keg gun club, they had about ten-foot high berm, and the target anchors would be between like three to five feet, like chicken wire you could clip things to, and the berm would extend like five feet above the target. So then you stand back fifty yards, twenty-five yards, whatever it is, so you've got a reasonable degree of angle between the top of the berm and the target you're shooting at.
Yeah.
So you might wanna scale it, depending on how far back you are, how much taller than the target height the berm needs to be.
I know, that's what I'm thinking, is can we, then, can we, uh, is it gonna be a nightmare to enforce? But it, these, this is also gonna be a nightmare to enforce, cause people won't pay attention to it.
Right, yeah, your situation's already a nightmare.
Well, this is really no different than what we have now, other than just cleans it up.
Yeah.
And, and excludes areas.
Yeah, I think it, I think it's a good start.
If you wanna go down the permitted route, then we're looking at an enforcement of the, you have to do a permit and then enforce it, which we would probably end up using the same people that are, you know, dealing with nuisance, and they're going out and doing inspections, it's like building inspectors, right? You'd, they, we have to send them out and there's a permitting process, and they would have to meet the X standard, whatever that standard is.
What, what was the highest amount of permitted, people got the permitted at once in the city?
Hmm, I would say we were at about a dozen.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
And you probably.
And that, that num, that number started out like at one, and it then, all of a sudden, as the shooting sports became more popular in the last fifteen years, that number really took off. It was a pretty, pretty small, one or two people for several years, and then it, it just took off.
And how, how many, how many shooting complaints have you had outside of those permitted ones, it's probably the majority of the ones?
Yes, yeah, it's not usually the ones that are, that are permitted, not the ones that get, yes, cause their neighbors generally know that they are shooting.
Right, and even if we do go down a, a backstop requirement and permitting process, we're still gonna have people that won't permit, they'll just continue to do it.
Yeah, it, what'll happen is you will have a law, and some, most people will be breaking it, and some people won't, which is the same thing we have today.
Yeah.
So does it make sense to look at going forward with, with a couple changes we discussed today, but since this is essentially just cleaning up the current ordinance, going forward with that, and then looking at some of these bigger changes as a separate item?
What, what I think, yeah, I think what, if you wanted permission to shoot on your property, and, and there was somebody shooting on their property, and you went out and, the police went out, it would be just like it is today, and they would say, somebody reported shooting on your property, oh, I'm, I am a, I have a permit, they've come and inspected my backdrop, oh, okay, and then, so. And then, so like it, the situation will just be the same, except one person put the time and effort into making their situation legal and the other person didn't. Be the same.
Yeah, so would we look at adding some language in separately? We could, we have to figure out what those permitting standards would be in process, how we do all that. Or so do we wait on this update? Or do we go forward with this update and do that separately whenever?
Well, generally, you know, this is like, it explains it to be a really, really rough draft to get your, to get the full council's feedback to kind of see if there was something we wanted to, to add to this. And if that's something you're interested in adding, we can certainly take a look at it and, and, and go down there. This isn't, we're generally moving forth most of this at this point. But if that's something that you, you know, interested in looking at, we'll, we'll look at that and bring back some draft language.
I'd be interested.
Before we move forward.
I think John is, Alan?
I'm, by exploring whatever.
Yeah, I'm, again, I, I, when I shot my pistol on my property, I had dug a ten foot hole, I had the berms around it. And pistol shoot, you shoot anywhere between fifteen and thirty feet at a target down in the hole, that's what I did. Rifles, I'm always been a believer, if I'm gonna sight in my rifle, I'm going north of twenty-three, that's what I do. Or go to a controlled range someplace, just to control, but there's a number of people in this town that aren't gonna, don't believe the same way, so.
You could also, like, like I would never dream of having a, that long of a, like you can't sight, you actually can't.
You need a hundred yards to sight a rifle.
You can't sight a rifle here. I could, but it's so unusual and people wanna go out to, you know, four hundred, three hundred yards. And you're taking a pretty big risk.
True.
Yeah, I think you'd max out at a handgun.
You'd, yeah, you'd wanna have the range be like, not that, not the type that people would wanna all come over and sight in your.
Right.
Yeah, cause what, to pass your concealed carry, that's a what, eight yard test?
I can't remember.
Something like that?
Not sure.
It's like, well, you gotta do two, you have to do, then you gotta do both hands.
Again, I.
But it's not at the distance.
In the interest of time and stuff, I think we need to define the, the shoot no shoots area, the shotgun hunting definitions, and then maybe a secondary step of talking ranges for pistols and stuff at a later date.
And that's, that's pretty much basically what I have in mind now.
Yeah.
I said it. And Jeremy, uh, did you have, you had mentioned you had a top, additional topic you wanted to bring up?
In the three minutes that we have left, sure.
Oh, my God.
I was going to suggest that we consider having some requirement around safe storage, just to make sure that, to the extent that the city ordinance can control it, we have a requirement that guns are kept out of reach of children in someplace where it's not easily identified and stolen by criminals.
There's, there's already state statutes.
There is state statute, um, I don't know exactly, just taught it this past weekend on Saturday at firearm safety class, but I don't know the statute off the top of my.
If we can get that written into our.
They've actually strengthened it, um, and I know that there's some current legislation that they're looking at, actually strengthening it even more.
It's hard to be redundant.
We, we probably reference, we would reference.
Reference the state statute.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Counselor Nichols, it's six oh nine point six six. Oh, wait, no, that's not the right one, it was, I had it just pulled up here a little, oh, I think it's six six six. So if you want to look and see if you have other ideas in addition to that, we can't replicate the state statute, but if there's something that we wanna do differently than it, we can hear, hear what ideas you might have, but I think.
For, for storage?
Yeah.
I, I can tell you I'm not gonna approach that one.
Fair enough.
I, I don't want three hundred people here.
Yeah, I don't know if it's in state statute, I, I think it is something that's being discussed too right now specifically, like, that's it.
Is there, are there any rights that they don't wanna take away by a state statute right now?
Not too many, unfortunately. Okay, anything else? Perfect, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thanks for all the work.